...in regards to new business, which would be what, Article Four, the Twin Rivers Paper Tax Abatement. There's a lot of you here for that? Okay, well, I think the wishes of the board, let's move that up, so that way, you know, people want to, you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting, I'm not trying to get rid of you, but if you wanna, those that do wanna leave after, we'll give them that opportunity. Okay, we've got this on our agenda. Tonight on the agenda, we have a, on July ninth of this month, we took, we had an executive session, we opened in regular session, we had, we were addressed by our agent and our attorney in regards to the situation we're dealing with, with the tax abatement from 2011 from Twin Rivers. We had, or our agent has signed a confidentiality agreement, which restricted him to divulge certain financials, or certain confidential or sensitive information of the mill that got out, it would be detrimental to their well-being. So, based on that, a motion and a second was made to go into executive session, and we did so. I believe it was close to, if not, just a couple hour executive session, we came back. The board took action, keeping in mind that we've been at this for nine months at least, maybe a little bit longer, in regards to trying to deal with this issue. We've put budgets on hold, because we didn't know where this was gonna go, still not clear where it's going to go. But it became evident, when we addressed, we were addressed, and we had our discussion with our agent, that the mill's valuation, a little over a hundred and seventy million, was too high. They requested an abatement from roughly a hundred and seventy million, down to approximately forty million, I'm using round numbers, which would have been a decrease of a hundred and thirty million in valuation from the number. That meant that if we turned down completely their request, that we were gonna go to the state of Maine, or they were gonna go to the state of Maine, challenging our decision. We came out of the executive session with the understanding that there was going to be some, a letter had to be sent to the mill advising them of this action, that they have a period of time to either accept our decision, and then we move on to another budget year, 2012, 2013, or they could file again with the state of Maine. The action that was taken that night was the board made a motion and a second to decrease their valuation from roughly a hundred and seventy million, down to a hundred and forty-five million, which is a twenty-five million dollar abatement, uh, valuation. That abatement request, when you change it to dollars, or equate it to dollars, I'll change it to dollars, is a tax abatement of four hundred eleven thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and ninety-one cents. We have had major discussions over this period of time, we've had discussions with the budget committee, we've met with the school committee, we've advised them that we're going to be probably facing a very unique situation for our community, not unlike other communities I've faced, but for Madawaska, it was one of those situations where we had to take a look at this. We are no experts when it comes to industrial classification and values, so we hired a person from Madison, who does valuations, works in industrial surroundings, he came in, he's visited the mill, he asked for, I'm not gonna say a truckload, but pretty close, of information from the mill, and when he came back to us, he point-blank told us that the hundred and seventy million will not stand any use, it's not their value anymore. So, based on the motion and the second and the vote, now the letter was sent to the mill, hand-delivered certified mail, uh, mail, they have X amount of time, sixty days?
Sixty days depending on whether they wanna follow the state.
Yeah, whether they wanna file with the state or not, and we don't know where we are with that yet. The twenty-five million is probably not where they want us to be, but we know definitely that we don't wanna be anywhere near what they ask. So as we develop our new 2011, 12, 2013 budget, we are going to have to have discussions with them again. We're probably maybe looking at more abatement, but we have to keep the balance of what their true values are. I mean, all of us would like them to be worth two hundred million, so they could pay the majority of the taxes, you know, love to see that, but that's not gonna happen, we're not in those economic times anymore. So tonight, we're faced, to make a motion and a second, I believe, actually to be taken on this abatement thing, as part of the procedure, is that?
You've already put the vote on.
Okay, so you're just showing us what that value was?
Uh, you're just signing the book.
We're just signing the book.
You're just signing the book.
Okay, and by signing the book, we have to figure out where we're gonna get the money to give them at the end of, what if they don't, or they file with the state? Do we hold this off, or do we take?
No, because you've granted it.
We've granted it, whether they accept what we've asked, or granted the?
You've granted that, I mean, they could file for the state and say, no, we want another fifty million dollars the last year, and the state could grant that.
Yeah.
They may not, we don't know that, but they have the right to still appeal your decision.
Correct.
I don't think they'll, I think they'll be looking, if anything, they'll look for more than that, or just accept that for last year's, and look for?
Right, so, in the interim after this meeting, we did, and all board members received it, Paul, you put a letter together, asking for this board to basically maybe have a discussion tonight, so, I'll give you a few minutes, if you wanna address this, for yours, for a few minutes, and keeping in mind that the action has been taken, we don't know where it's gonna end up yet, but we're there. Can I ask a question?
Please, yeah, if, when he's done, if you wanna ask a question, that's fine.
All right, thank you for recognizing the importance of the issue, Mr. Chairman, and listening to your synopsis of the, of the issues at hand, I tend to think that the mill, that Twin Rivers is, you know, is, is playing, is playing a game with you by asking for a ridiculous amount of abatement, and bluffing you into giving a, what you feel is a reasonable amount of abatement, and I just, I just have issues with that whole process, and it being kept in secret, there, I'm not even sure that the, that the board members saw the actual financial information from, from Twin Rivers, and I'm not sure that the, I don't have any confidence that whoever was up here assessing that mill, and giving you that opinion, you know, was, was at all accurate. I know a little bit about paper mills, both from my experience in the mill here, and from my experience with, with working for the US Department of Labor, and inspecting many paper mills around the country, and I know, from my own experience, that that mill is easily worth a hundred and seventy-one million dollars, and it stands today. In fact, I think number seven and eight paper machines, and the, the single catalog machine that's there probably equal that valuation. And I really think that before you finalize this, this issue tonight, if you're gonna sign a book, or whatever it is you're gonna do, I would really, really think that you should, you should reevaluate and reassess your position here. That said, Mr. Chairman, I believe that there are some issues that, that there are some, some questions, and some questionable dealings, or questionable actions on the part of the board in respect to this issue, and that goes back to the meeting last Monday, some of us were interested in that meeting, the meeting was posted. However, I went to the St. John Valley Times, and I went to the Fiddlehead Focus, and they don't have any record of being notified of the meeting, which is a legal requirement on your part, folks, and I'm not sure, I didn't go to the Bangor Daily News, but I think as a state's largest newspaper, they should have been advised of that meeting. The agenda item that was posted on that meeting simply said that you were gonna get a, an explanation of the assessor's findings, it never said anything about taking a vote on anything, and you did not post your agenda properly, and I think that, that makes the whole vote null and void. The posting is an issue, and the failure to, to notify the press is an issue, those are both legal requirements. Also, some of the citizens that called here were told that they would not be allowed to speak on the issue at the meeting, and in fact, the people that were here did not speak to the issue, because they were not allowed to. That, I feel, is totally improper for such a big issue. I was led to believe that the issue would be taken up tonight, on the seventeenth, it was in the papers that way, and that's the way it was explained to people who, who raised the issue here, and then all of a sudden, you folks take the vote that night when you come out of the executive session, something really smells like, like fishy to me. When you, the people that were here last week, I wasn't here for that meeting, when you made the motion to go into executive session, you never specified what statute?
I did, I specifically.
And could you tell me what that statute was, 'cause there was no filming or the?
Give me a second. Yeah, that's on the, there, last week's agenda. Okay, we went into executive session to discuss confidential records, according to one MRSA subsection, four oh five, six F.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman, that's exactly my point.
Discuss confidential?
You simply, you simply went into executive session based on four oh six F, but that section of four oh six, that section F, requires that there be a statute that specifically puts into confidential nature those documents and the information that you're gonna be discussing, and that statute was never specified, and I don't believe there is a statute that makes that confidential. In fact, I believe just the opposite, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Mr. Chairman, please, I really, really believe that the, that the, one of the central issues here is that when Freezer, when, when Twin Rivers, I still think of them as Freezer, when Twin Rivers comes and asks the town for this kind of an abatement, I believe they have a legal obligation, they certainly have a moral obligation, but they, I believe they also have a legal obligation to bear their soul financially, to tell us as taxpayers, and assure you as our representatives, that they in fact are only worth forty million dollars, or a hundred and forty million dollars, or a hundred and forty-five million dollars, or maybe they're even worth more than a hundred and seventy-one million dollars, but we don't know that, and you don't know that, and that is really, really, to me, it's, it's terrible. Mr. Chairman, please, don't interrupt me.
I'm gonna give you two more minutes.
That's fine, I can do it in two more minutes.
I won't interrupt for a minute, but.
I've said pretty much what I wanna say, I would hope, I would like to read my letter into the record if I could, that'll only take me a couple minutes. The letter, for, for those of you in, in Madawaska, I can, I'll dispense with the reading, I passed some copies out tonight, and for those of you listening on channel, is it sixteen, Colin? Channel sixteen, you can come to the town and ask for a copy of this under the Freedom of Access Act, and you can get a copy of my letter, but it basically outlines some of the things that I, that I stated here tonight. I would, I would encourage you to really read my letter closely, 'cause I plan on following up on this myself, and I, I don't need to hire a lawyer to do that, I can do the legal work myself, and I'm committed to doing that. The last thing I wanna do is to, is to, is to hand you a letter, a copy of a letter that I wrote this afternoon, and it simply says, Dear Board of Selectmen, in light of your recent decision to grant Twin Rivers a twenty-two percent reduction, the twenty-two percent I got from the town manager, she told me that there was a thirty-one million dollar reduction in valuation last Wednesday, or last Tuesday, rather, when I came in, from a hundred and seventy-one to a hundred and forty, and I hear tonight it's a hundred and forty-five. Whatever the percentage is, Mr. Chairman, you can change that percentage, but I'm simply asking that the board grant me a twenty-two percent reduction in their valuation, I hereby request a twenty-two percent reduction in the valuation of all properties that I own in Madawaska. I ask that the reduction be made effective on the same date as the Twin Rivers reduction, and that you can either grant the reduction, my reduction outright, based on the Twin Rivers percentage, or you can add me to the gen, the agenda of a future board meeting, so that I can present my justification to you. And I, and I'll tell you, a lot of us have been living with that new valuation and those increases, when in fact, our valuation is much less than that, our real valuation, but we've been paying our taxes, and I think Twin Rivers should do the same. You're not gonna like what I come here with, the financial information and the, and the recent sales on School Street, just to give you one example, on School Avenue, rather, and see what the real sales have been lately, and see what the real valuations are, but if you're gonna give Twin Rivers a twenty or eighteen percent reduction, you need to grant it across the board to all the taxpayers in town. The last point I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman, if it's twenty-five million dollar abatement for, for Twin Rivers, I want you to think about it in this terms, that's taking two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty one-hundred-thousand-dollar homes off the tax rolls in this town. I'm not even sure there's two-hundred-and-fifty one-hundred-thousand-dollar homes in this town, let alone, you know, the, you need, I, I really think you need to reassess and reevaluate what you've done here, the action that you took last Monday is highly questionable legally, if you wanna, if you wanna take this, do it the right way, Mr. Chairman, notify people, allow them to have input, get the real facts and figures, and then make a decision in the light, in the, in the sunshine, and not the way it was done. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, I do. Anyone else on this issue before?
Is this, the tax evaluation, is the tax based on earnings or value? Because I know somebody had put something in the paper three, four months ago, about there being three ways to assess, either by value, by earnings, and another third?
Maybe our town manager can speak directly to that.
There are three methods, there's a cost, there's market, and there's income, and we had been valuing based upon cost of purchase, minus depreciation, and then we applied the discounted index to it, nearly for those adjustments. There is market, and then there is, at one point, they had come and talked about income, and that's not where we're at with this, we're now at the market, and that's what the question was based upon, was the market, but we didn't?
Is everybody on the same, on the same page on that, in other words, if you're doing it for whatever system you use, it's for everybody, including?
Everybody in town is based on market value.
Okay, so, they're based on that too, for this?
They never have been, they've always been, on the formula, on, down at the mill, it's always been based on cost, since they developed that formula in the eighties, it was always based on the cost method.
Now, why can't they be assessed on value like the rest of us?
Well, they can, and that's why they're asking for such a reduction, because if you look at what paper companies are selling for, not much of a market for them, that's the problem. So if you switch to the market approach, and people, when that came out of the bankruptcy sale, that came out of there with four properties attached to it, and the buyout was about forty million dollars for all four properties, so if you adjust it based upon that market, which is what they're asking for, they're saying that their value should be forty million dollars, and that's including it instead.
And that's exactly the big danger for you folks as selectmen, is if you're gonna value them at their value, then you need to value us at our value, otherwise, you're not treating everybody equally under the law, and that's where your dilemma is, folks, and so you need to really step back and take a hard look at this, at what you've done, and if you're not sure about what you've done, and I know your attorney's not here tonight, if you're not sure about what you've done, I would not finalize this, this action tonight, and I would probably pull back my letter.
Well, the action was taken, and the reason the action had to be taken, because the agreement, we had to respond to them in time, we learned, they have X amount of time, and once they give us their request, we have X amount of time to respond to their request, yes, no, maybe, part, whatever. We even had to ask for an extension, and they granted that extension, and the vote had to be taken prior to July fifteenth, because that's when our deadline was. Now?
Why did you advertise it that way, then, Mr. Chairman? You put in the paper that you let the paper to believe it was gonna be action on July seventeenth?
I can't speak to what was in the paper clearly, because I, you know, I'm here, we set up a meeting, and it goes through wherever things have been posted in the past, all our meetings are posted.
Yeah, but you didn't post that there was gonna be a vote, people didn't know, and then you told people they couldn't, they couldn't talk, even if they came?
Every agenda, Paul, but every agenda we have, every agenda we have, we have a description of what our agenda says, it doesn't say on every article, a vote will be required, it doesn't say that. It's understood that we, as a board, need to take action to conduct the, the business of this community, and we do that with the best information we have at the time we make our decisions. And we had legal counsel here, we had a person that is in the know, and, and gave us numbers, and reviewed some of the financials with us, and we, as a board, at that point, had to make a decision. It's not what they wanted. It's not easy for us to say we wanna abate anything, we have to use our heads, and that's what we've tried to do, based on the education, the information that was given to us, we looked at it, we said, well, okay, let's offer twenty-five million. We don't know yet how far this is gonna go, whether it's even gonna be accepted, or how we're gonna go forward, but we don't even have a budget for 2012 and 2013, we're already almost about one month, you know, into that. We have to make decisions, and we have to move forward, and that's what we're trying to do as best we can. It's a difficult place for any of us to be, difficult place, you know, for you as a taxpayer to sit back and say, you know, this is what they're doing, you know, we, we don't grant these things lightly. You, as an individual, have always had the right to come in, and if you feel your valuation is inappropriate, inappropriate, you can ask for an abatement also, there are guidelines to follow, timelines to follow, and we've had those requests after we had our last valuation, I'm not sure how many we've had, but we had some, we had our assessor take a look at them, and then if we could work with the person involved, if not, it went to the next step, and that next step, I think, was the county, and, and from the county, you know, whatever those decisions came, to date, the valuation that we had done, the last, you know, on, on properties we've done, to date, I don't believe we, when it went to the county, that anything's come back against us, they found that what we have done was appropriate.
Yeah, Don, I've gone through that process to the county, the next step for me was go to Superior Court, so, I mean, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough role.
The next step is Superior Court, after the county?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So in their case, the, the mill has that same option, you know, they're, they're like me or you, except they're huge, but they also have the right to ask for an abatement, they did, and we have to not just fluff them off, we have to take a look at that, and we did the best we can with the assessor we hired, the agent, we understand that moving forward, you know, we need to have a firm or a person, you know, come in, and we're gonna do a, a, I'm not sure what the word is, but a, a proper nickel-and-dime type valuation of the, that's the next step, that's what we're gonna move forward, and hopefully we can get that done in 2012, by the end of the year. That's where we are at this moment. Mr. Seer, you have your hand up if you want to assist.
Can you divulge the amount that the assessor, the appraiser, assistant?
We're still under the confidentiality issues on this point, because we're gonna wait to see exactly, because we, we need to use this information if it goes further, it goes to the state, and, and to make it public tonight would be contrary to what we're trying to do, we're hoping that we can come to an agreement with them, but, but to actually tell you what the numbers, we saw they were ballpark numbers, and I really don't wanna put them out there until we know exactly where we're going, but we have to let them respond to us.
It's the same question I had.
Mine too.
They are, forty million dollars, forty million dollars is scrap value, I know, and use your multiples, three-point-three times for what actual value is.
Three-point-two?
Three-point-three. So, and they just sold, for instance, the Juniper, they're, one-fourth of their leg that they had in the, the closeout sale there, it went for barely a million, so, that's the whole Juniper mill, and it's as big as Edna's in Madawaska, so they only have three legs left on their, their chair right now.
I understand your concerns, and you're absolutely correct in coming and addressing that, that's fine, but we also have to take action and move forward, we didn't take the action they wanted us to take, but we have to keep this community going as best we can, everyone's butt meal, and we're gonna do it, and the bottom line is that the, the hit on this 2011 is gonna follow us to 2012, but in 2012, 2013, we may be sitting with them again, once we get some numbers a little bit clearer, then we may have to take another vote, which may, might at that point say, yeah, we need to decrease their valuation again by, whatever, but we have to develop our budget in anticipation that they're correct to a certain point, or somewhere's in the middle, can't go full-fledged budget, likely business as usual, and then in two years from now, or three years from now, when the state makes a decision, and they partly side with, you know, with the mill, where are we gonna find this money to pay them back? We're gonna address our budgets, trying to, you know, as we move forward, as best we can, it's not gonna be easy for this community for the next few years, but we've got, we've got to try to keep everyone, you know, within, within reason, we've got to try to keep this employer, employing people, and we gotta deal with that, and that's what we're charged with, I mean, personally, you know, I'd like to have an abatement, but that's not what this is all about, this is about this board making decisions based on the facts that we were told and given. Mr. Seer, a couple more questions?
What effect will the abatement on the Twin River, whatever the abatement is, if it's forty million, or twenty-five million, whatever, what effect will it have as far as the state is concerned, as far as redates and so on?
The state, the state and our town manager was proactive on this, she's already started that process a long time ago, talking with people at the state, and in round numbers, sudden and severe, you know, we can fall into sudden and severe impact, which basically the state will give us up to forty percent, forty percent of, of that loss, so in 2011, if we're looking at, again, in round numbers, four hundred thousand, forty percent of that, the state will send us a hundred and sixty thousand.
What about the county?
No impact on the county.
No effect?
No.
Thank you.
You are, any more comments?
Yeah, Don, are you in the process right now, did you say while, were you looking at your budgets throughout the town, and how you can cut those?
We've, we're basically saying we've put our budgets on hold until we have come up with more information that we received, now we have to meet our?
Meet on hold, you're not spending more?
Well, we went through a town meeting, we've asked the voters at the town meeting to allow us to spend the equivalent of, on a per-month basis, of, based on last year's budget numbers. We have not given them a complete budget for 2012, 2013, we're living on the average of, I mean, to make life simple here, a twelve-million-dollar budget, twelve months, a million a month, in round numbers, don't quote me because the numbers aren't accurate, but, and, and the voters have allowed us to operate until we can present to them another budget for their review and?
So it's pretty evident going down the road, that this town will not be able to afford the kind of budgets we've had in the past?
That's correct.
Totally, I mean, big changes.
That's correct, no, you're absolutely right.
Unless you come back to me and say, pay more taxes?
Yeah, and that's the one thing that, you know?
And I hope you don't do that.
Yeah, we, we, we're not sure where the impact is going to be, but we're never gonna put the full impact of what we're? but we're never going to put the full impact of what we're doing with the mill on the back of any taxpayer, you know, other taxpayers in this community can do. I can't promise that we may be looking at certain things down the road, but I can't. I definitely can promise you that at least my vote will not be the full impact to offset what we lose from that. There are going to be reductions to be able to try to balance that definitely. Any more? Barb, go ahead.
I just want to say I think sometimes we're the board that's trying to keep the town going. But you also have to understand, we live in this town, we pay taxes in this town. Most of the board have houses, they're going through everything that you guys go through. We really are trying to do what's best for the town. It may not go your way, you might not like it, we might not like it. But we really do try to do what has to be done. And whether you like the town manager or not, she really, trust me, the time I've been here, she really is on top of things. And I am not doing that to kiss butt because those of you who know me, no, I don't kiss butt. But she really is on top of things. So we might be the board, but we're still members of this town. Don't want to see it go down any more than the next person. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
One more comment?
Just one more comment. I, I appreciate that, Barbara. And I don't think anybody here tonight pointed any fingers at Christine. I sort of, that's the impression I gave.
I didn't do that for that.
I didn't do that. But I'm simply, I simply want to remind you again that there are, there are laws and procedures for you to follow when you take this kind of action, especially this kind of important action. And I think there's some holes there.
But we had our lawyer with us.
Well, that, that doesn't say much to me because I, you know, I... I dealt with Drummond Woodson when I was on the school board and I wasn't very impressed with their legal work. But that's another story. The only other thing I wanted to say is that I really... You have to look at the history here too, folks, I think. The history of Brookfield Asset Management coming in here and buying up that mill and bringing a team of people in here to run that mill into the ground, which is what they did. And they bankrupted it and then they transferred their pension burden on, on the U.S. side to the Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation. Basically, they transferred the assets, the assets and the liabilities to us, the U.S. taxpayer. And in Edmondson, they, they laid it on the backs of other pensioners. And now, when they come out of bankruptcy, Brookfield Asset Management still controls that company and Brookfield Asset Management makes $750 million on the average in the last, over the last four years. They've averaged $750, $800 million in profits, net profits. That's huge. And yet, they can come in here under the guise of Twin Rivers and snow everybody about how poor they are and how they, you know, they got to sell this mill and they got to get out from under. Well, a lot of it's a lot of snow and a lot of smoke and mirrors, folks. And it's your job, you asked for the job. And I, I know, I know what it's like from sitting on the school board for three years. It's not an easy job. But you need to make sure you don't get snowed. And I think that's what happened.
If we have future, and we will have future meetings, we will definitely make sure that everyone is contacted when we have a report. We'll make that clear.
Does he report on channels?
When they're there, they always advertise. When Channel 16 is in session, they've always...
Yeah, we're not airing this summer and that's probably why. And I don't, I didn't check the box.
We always pass it, so there's no one there.
With regards specifically to whether or not you notified the press, could you please tell me who specifically you did notify for the press?
I can't, I can't tell you that. Minow sends the agendas out. It would be her email. I can ask her tomorrow, I'll check with her tomorrow. But Minow sends them usually to the board members, the budget committee. She usually does the papers. She gets them ready for the police officers to post. She sends it to the TV station. And she's usually very, very good with notifying everybody. Happened last week when the questions came in, she was on vacation. So she is back this week. So call her, I'm sure she'll have a regular future session.
Okay, thank you.